Extending through, but not vehicular access, correct? That's as this project is now proposed. And that, I believe, they're in the environmental review phase. They're still pretty early in the process.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Williams.
Well, I had one question for you, Pat, and then a question for city staff. One is, what is the, can you show me approximately where the 100-foot setback from the top of the bank of the creek is on that parcel?
Thank you. Betty, we're city planners, City of Santa Barbara. We have, as Ms. Salia said, we've been in the preliminary project review stages with the Hillside House property. And we do have a biologic survey, a geology and creek morphology type survey showing where the 100-foot setback is along the Hillside House property, which we could interpolate and extend across the Park property. I'm sorry, I don't have that diagram for you. And we haven't had an actual study of the Parks property. I, too, have spoken with Carolyn Parks, but we haven't undertaken any actual review of their property. We have been talking with the Hillside House around 100-foot buffer, given the level of activity, water, and just many physical, environmental, and city policies. And we're looking at 100-foot buffer there. So I am sorry, I can't show you. I don't think I could show you accurately, but it would certainly consume quite a bit of the Park property. So the earlier question about the development potential of the Park property, that really has not been determined, given we have not specifically overlaid that setback on their property, nor have we determined where the access to a future school district project would be, or whether or not they could have shared access through the Hillside House. So there are many factors that would influence the buildable site design issues for the Park property, as well, of course, the property you're talking about today, the school district.
Thank you. As many of you know, that I've been, to further complicate this, advocating that it's in the city's interest, given the number of developments in the Los Pecidos Valley that have occurred in recent years, to turn this place into a public open space park, or part of it into a public open space park. And I've been advocating that the city look at options with the school board of either doing a transfer of land or transfer of leases to accomplish the school district's housing goals in a setting that may be more conducive to it in the downtown, where density can be tolerated at higher levels. And I just wanted to ask staff, there's, you know, different possibilities, and there has been some study on downtown sites, including the Louise Lowery and the Cota commuter lot, also known once as Lincoln School. In terms of its viability, and I just wanted our staff to comment on what some of those possibilities are and where they are.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Madam President. I'm Paul Casey, the city's community development director. I think Councilmember Williams is referencing a study we did with the Redevelopment Agency about four years ago, looking at the opportunity of affordable housing on city-owned property and primarily on downtown surface parking lots, and the opportunity of looking at as somewhat free space and could you build housing on top of it. We did that study. Those were two lots that were viable from an affordable housing standpoint. You could get upwards of maybe 50 units, depending upon unit size, on the Louise Lowery-Davis lot, and upwards of 70 to 80 units on the Cota Street lot for smaller-sized affordable units. If you're looking at market units, they're larger, and so you'd get fewer units on it. It's complicated a little bit by the construction costs, because you've got parking that you most likely would want to replace, and then you need to park the residential and then build above on a podium, which is a pretty expensive form of construction. So there's a little difference there on the cost standpoint. But they are viable potential sites that the city could look at for transferring, realistically, some. I think when you look at the land values here and the construction costs being much simpler, I'm not sure it's a straight one-for-one. We've also looked at those sites as part of the Naples Transfer Development Rights. And there was also that issue of, you know, how many units do you need to build on this side to draw down the development potential on Naples? And so I think that's a similar concept you're looking at here.
There was one other possibility also that, and this is just, I guess, depends on what the school district's interest is, which is simply the transfer of the Casique RDA property for MNO facility for the school district, and then what does that free up on this particular site right here for the school district's use, which would make it, I guess, even more complicated, because we're talking about three properties as opposed to two. But it's something that I hope that we continue to examine, and maybe I'll just talk about that a little bit later after public comment.
Yeah, Ms. Malkoff.
Maybe we should pursue some of those ideas, and perhaps we have a lot of issues that we seem to need to work together on, on this particular issue. And, you know, we've sort of skirted around that for a while, and maybe we need to, at this point, have some sort of a subcommittee or something like that, where we, some members from our board and some members from your board, and work together on some of these issues.
Anybody else wish to weigh in on this?
I just think that that would definitely accomplish a goal, I think, which is that we've been talking about it for a while, and it's complicated. We also have other development and projects that we need to talk about in more detail. And I think that that would serve both the city and the neighborhood and the school district's interest to have those discussions happen in detail at a committee level.
I think it would be good, though, for us to hear from the public first before we.
A footnote on this part, if I may, Madam President. It would be very helpful to me, at any rate, to see something in writing about the option of a land swap. So it was helpful to have Mr. Casey's comments, but I know I'm not going to remember them. If we could have that, just move it up to the level of being one of the possible disposition options, and get a little bit of documentation, it would help us understand it better. I think that would be very helpful.
The problem is that it has not come to the city council, and the city council has not, four of us have not agreed to it. So it probably is not a good idea to put it on a piece of paper with our letterhead and give it to you. Do you know what I'm saying?
We could furnish the school district, however, with a copy of the land study.
Of the study we did, yes. That's fine.
Which might help.
I didn't think of that way, Madam Mayor. I was thinking about within our in-house evaluation of options, that this be listed as another one of the disposition options, and then documented. I realize now the documentation comes from another agency. Thank you.
Madam President, just a footnote on that. If we're going to be providing that study for more public consumption, I think it's incumbent upon us and fair to the rest of the world that we update those dollars from the four-year-old dollars in terms of land costs, construction costs, and so forth. So we all really do know what we're talking about. Thank you.
Okay. Speakers, we have David Lane, followed by Maida Palacios, then Ronald Doctors, then Helen Campbell, and Chris Hartman. Three minutes per speaker. I'll give you a 30-second warning, and then let you know when three minutes are up.
My name is David Lane. I'm from Hidden Valley. And I gave each of you a green folder. And I would like to read just the first page of it, about the present and the future. Hidden Valley is the home of a very large pack of coyotes. And if you should build upon their hunting grounds and deny them this open space, they will be coming into the neighborhoods at night and looking for any cats or dogs that might be out. While during the day, we will be looking at a considerable increase in cars coming into and through our neighborhoods. But in looking at the kinds of financial problems that the Board of Education is trying to solve, these are problems that we have always had and will always have them. But what we will not always have, and will be gone forever, are those very special natural places like Hidden Valley. If we keep destroying such places for those always enduring financial problems that could be addressed in alternative ways to the continuing degrading of the quality of life for all of us. That it is this much larger problem that we must now, in the present, start getting serious about solving. The preserving of the natural environment of the earth, or else the grandchildren of those students you are teaching today, because of global warming, will have to leave Santa Barbara because of those rising waters that are coming for their tomorrow. And so, like so many of our citizens in the past who have given of their lifelong earnings for the preservation of such special places, it is incumbent now, in the present, for the Board of Education and the city council to work together in finding a way for giving back this land to the people and preserving this special wild animal sanctuary of the earth's life that rightfully belongs to the future for us all.
Thank you, Mr. Lane.
Thank you.
Maida Palacios, followed by Ronald Doctors.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis, and school district board members, Mayor Bloom and city council board members, for an opportunity to discuss our concerns with you today. I want to thank all of you that have met with us and listened to our concerns over the last few months. We really appreciate the time and effort you've put into our little Hidden Valley. Historically, Santa Barbara has always been a leader in preserving open space and protecting the rights of the owners, excuse me, this is a little bit of a camel I'm reading here, protecting the rights of the homeowners to preserve the character of Santa Barbara's neighborhoods. Hidden Valley site is one of the last open areas in this city. We have been very impressed with the way the city council was very protective of the residents of Allen Road when Mark Lee proposal was before you. In the original proposal, only a few cars would have used Allen Road as access. The council made every effort to eliminate the access of the proposed houses onto Allen Road. The school property has a potential of 10 trips per day, per unit, which is the current city standard, which would put close to 1,000 cars per day on our residential streets. A significant impact in a residential area zoned, excuse me, in a residential area that is not zoned for that type of traffic, where the roads are not built to handle that kind of traffic. As you know, our residential area, I'm so sorry. We'll go to the next part of my speech. Regarding the development in the valley, the major intersection of Los Pecidos-Mooc Road and 101 is below current city standards. According to Rob Dayton, there are no plans for improvement, contrary to what planners stated at the meeting when comprehensive planning was requested for the valley. We now have approval for the Mark Lee project. There's application for 127 units for Hillside House. Ealing Parks is going to make application for additional expansion of their facility. Cottage Hospital is currently expanding.
30 seconds.
The school property with plans for 96 units. Together, these alone would put over 3,000 trips per day through an impacted intersection. Our area has a large portion of seniors with two major retirement homes, Valverde-Vista Del Monte. Valverde requires emergency assistance at least once a week. They have a hospice there. Given the road constraints in our area, it would seem appropriate that the existing residents in our area be given the consideration of safety and service delivery. We're also in a high fire hazard area.
Thank you. Ronald Doctors, followed by Helen Campbell.
My name is Ron Doctors, and thank you for letting me speak to you today. I couldn't decide what to say, so I took a walk in the field behind my house, which is Hidden Valley. And, excuse me, some of you don't know the area very well, but I know it extremely well. I've lived there for 30 years, and I've noticed that in 40 years, the school district has never bothered to make any collection of any funds from the use of the field. Not you guys necessarily, but 40 years is an awful long time not to get any money back, and now you're complaining that you're short of assets. The property has some very unique qualities, and one of which is the archaeological value. There was a large Tumash settlement in that area, which has largely been covered up by some irrigation and some of the farming activities in that area. Also, that field was once a farm, and the area I live in now was once a farm. So I guess I should say that maybe it could become housing again. But the problem is that this is the last piece of Santa Barbara that has not been destroyed by overdevelopment. And even if you put houses, even if you put 200 houses, or 1,000 houses, or a 10-story block of buildings on that property, you will not solve the problem in Santa Barbara of over underuse of property. And you will have eventually just more people living here blocking up the roads. I suggest that the solution could be that the property be put into a trust, and the public could put in their money and buy the property for the $8 million or $9 million that the school district seems to think it's worth. And then the city could have the property in perpetuity as a national preserve for everyone to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Helen Campbell, and the last speaker is Chris Hartman.
I will finish what Maida wasn't, didn't have time for. Because our group, the Association of Hidden Valley, have discussed this and went over the unitive problem, what they gave, they left out many things. They ignored a lot of things, such as the access, an earthquake, flooding, slope density. An important thing to remember is the precedent setting for density was also ignored. As you know, Hillside House wants a dense development, and undeveloped parks properties between the Hillside House property and the school property. The council was very protective of the residents of Allen Road when the Mark Lee proposal was before you. In the original proposal, only a few cars would have used Allen Road as an access. The council made every effort to eliminate the access of the proposed houses onto Allen Road. The school property has a potential of 10, well, she already stated that, so I won't go over to board. In your joint meeting with the school board, I ask you to consider these concerns, and please support a low-density development. When you think of all that they proposed to do, and they still ignore that so much has to go down Palermo Drive, and somebody's going to get killed the way that street is, and the kids coming out from Valverde that work there, they don't have a speed limit. They're on their cell phones, and the road curves, it's very dangerous there. We have collected over 350 signatures from the residents of Hidden Valley opposing high-density development and suggesting the consideration of a land swap. When we collected some of these signatures, some of the people were teachers and said that, as reported before, the teachers were not leaving the Santa Barbara area. One of the teachers said, in her school district, only two have retired, and that's the only change that they've been, that teachers are not leaving because of salary or the distance that they travel. Hidden Valley remains very concerned about development in the Pecidos Valley area, and we want our concerns to be addressed in the planning process. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Campbell. Chris Hartman. So that was the final speaker. Any other questions, comments? Mr. House, yeah?
I think that, well, there are two properties, the Tatum as well, right, which we didn't really dwell on today, and this one as well. And it's, and I kind of imagine these will be contentious, you know? We would like to hope that they wouldn't be, but we can imagine that. I believe that along with the economic analyses that we're seeing, that there should be some way of valuing the habitat and cultural resource, the potential value of the property to the community as a whole, if it were to have something like what Mr. Doctors proposed as a trust and a purchase of development rights or a transfer of some sort. I mean, in the economies of the value of a property like this, which has been, you know, left in a holding place for so long, that those things are critical to weigh in the balance. And as we know, the longer that these processes take, once they get on the public's radar, the higher the value of the development rights seem to become, to the point where they become so astronomical, they're out of sight. So the sooner that that kind of a weighing of those aspects of maybe a more holistic economy, I just think that that's really very, very important. And I would really hope to see that to come into early conversations, not be left till the environmental review point at the end, you know, as we get more to the end of that And I say that also in the way that there's, the city is in a unique place here, in the sense that we can, we may be able to participate. And I'm interested at all, to any degree, in this concept of transfers. One of the things that I would caution us, I know that neighbors are concerned about the density and the impacts, and it's way early in this process, but they have those concerns. I have a concern that in response to that, what may ultimately happen is something that doesn't get anybody much of what they want, which is a very low-density project that then consumes all of the habitat value and consumes all of the.
Park, passive park space or something like that. It just consumes it and leaves us with just the maybe very unsatisfactory benefit of a one-shot little boost in the resources of the district, and then not the very longer lasting benefit that we can have for the public and the environment. So it's sort of, I think we need to go into this as much as possible with that kind of a.
And I don't know that I saw that in today's presentation, and that's the reason I'm bringing it up. I would certainly trust that the personnel that are involved in this really have that kind of heart and that kind of ability to think and present things that way. But I would like us to, I just feel it's necessary to bring that up right now to make sure that we go into it with that, and not end up at the other end having regretted not having looked into it at that level.
Mr. Horton?
One of the thorny issues here is the economics of this project, for me anyway, because that's my background. And we're dealing with subjective and objective concerns. Some of these concerns deal with the future of our community. They deal with the benefit to our youth and children that may develop over the years. They speak to what will our city look like in 50 and 100 years, and there's those kind of things. It's hard to put a value on that. And then the district and the city both have real financial fiscal issues, which those of us up here have been elected to serve. And we have to take that into consideration. And in saying that, the crucial model here is one that's so hard to design, because it has to take into account things which you can't put a real solid value on. But they are just as real as anything. And anyone that's ever been to Yosemite, or Sequoia, or anything knows what I'm talking about. You can't really value it, but if that hadn't been done 100 and some-odd years ago, think what the nation would look like today. Because the way that this country operates, anyway, is that the economics of the issue will drive the formula and will drive the model, not the human and social values. So we need to address this issue in a way that takes into consideration the needs and wishes of all these different things that I've mentioned. The needs for the school board and the city for a good economic value, the needs of our children and the needs for the future, the need to preserve the environment. And I don't have a clue what that model would be like, but I think that us, these two groups, as Mrs. Malkoff has said, getting together with an open mind and looking at it, I'm pretty optimistic that, given enough time, we could come up with a model that is a multiple win. In fact, really, that's the only way that we can proceed. It has to be pretty much a win for everybody. We can't design one that, to me, that only serves the environment and leaves the school board with nothing in their pockets. And the city has the same issues. We have real economic concerns. But there is enough here on the table that we've already talked about, and what Mr. Williams has said, and which I agree with, that I think if we're willing to put the hard work in, and we're willing to take the time it's going to take to do it, that we can come up with something, and it may be many months or even years out. And I don't know, the other issue, which I should have said earlier, is I don't know how much time the board has to work on this, because it's not going to happen overnight. It could take certainly months, if not years, to get to this kind of a decision. But for me, that would be the best way to approach this, would be to indeed have the joint committee work on it, and get as much community input as we can, and strive for a balanced approach, which tries to answer all these questions. Thanks.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I think Mr. Horton's kind of hit on it. For me, to put it in different words, well, to begin with, I don't know that the city planning commission is going to be particularly impressed with how much each unit sells for, and those kinds of concerns. They're going to talk about access, and to what degree do the additional units spoil the Palermo resident quality of life, and to what degree can they be minimized? And that would talk about other access routes. I think also the discussion will go in the direction, excuse me, of the necessity of the green space that Mr. Williams and Mr. Horton are talking about. And so the unit count, regardless of the cost, regardless of the value, the unit count, I think, will be driven upon how those units are physically composed, and then can they be clustered so as to possibly, as Mr. Horton is suggesting, get some units as well as have vast open and green space. I also want to say that I think the school district needs are vast and large and huge. And I don't, when we talk about society benefits, it's very important to remember that the school district takes care of our most precious product, which is our children. God bless the coyotes and everything else, but our most precious product is our children. So to go back to Mr. Horton's concepts, I think it's correct. There is, you know, the old balance thing. We're going to have to figure out what that balance is. My planner hat on suggests to me that it isn't just this parcel. It is a multi-parcel, broadly-based view of maybe several ownerships there. As we all know, you can't force any property owner to demand of their neighbor that they participate in any given project. So there's no way that we can make those demands upon the Park family, or the Hillside House, or others. But I do believe that that discussion of all those multi-parcels then begins to give us understandings of access, where green space can be found, how units can be clustered, how the creek can be saved, et cetera. If we try to do all that with, simply within the boundary defines of this property, I think we may hit our head against a wall. So how we get to that discussion with the neighbors is a difficult one, but I think that's really going to be important. So I applaud the district looking at these in terms of long-term leases. So, I applaud the district looking at these in terms of long-term leases. If we think, as a young man, I argued in front of the school board not to get rid of Wilson School and Garfield School and all those other schools. My background as a real estate appraiser suggested to me that there are cycles that happen. And nothing is more valuable in terms of building and things as there is that land. We have to have that land. We may be having a downturn right now of students, but if you put on your 100-year glasses, you can't believe that we're not going to need schools in 100 years and probably more. We are now in the city building an awful lot of residences. We're building condominiums all over the place downtown. While they are brand-new right now and they are occupied by wealthy people who can afford high-dollar values, there will come a time when those same units are older and they will be part of the stock that target the lower value and the people who can afford those lower ones. So, I think we need to keep those cycles in our minds when we recognize that we're not building for tomorrow or 10 years from now. We're building for 100 and 200 years from now. So, I applaud that look at the long-term leases because that keeps the land in the district. Mr. Williams and I have talked about this at length, and I think it would be, as was mentioned by Ms. Malikoff, I think it would be excellent to have a little smaller group of a couple of board members, a couple of council people, some staff, hash this out and see what we have. But I really think it's an opportunity. I don't want to look at it as, oh, my God, what a hill we have to climb. I think it's a great thing. There's housing for teachers. There's a distinct possibility of a lot of preserved open space in terms of parks. I think there is a housing opportunity for the market, possibly. That whole area, as everybody on the council knows, is a governmental mess. It's across jurisdictional, who provides the sewers? Who provides the water? Does the county control it? Does the city control it? All of those things, because Las Pecitas, as so many people have mentioned, it's like the last frontier. And as a consequence of it being the last frontier, even the governmental jurisdictions have not really dealt with it well. So, there's all kinds of pockets of old-timey ways of dealing with it. And this project may be a way for us all to coalesce and organize and make better all those cross-jurisdictional things that are going on there. So, I look as a real opportunity. And I hope the city can help you in whatever way you feel we can for planning and et cetera. Thank you, Madam President.
Madam President, could I just add a couple things, please? First, it's correct whoever observed that there really wasn't a discussion about the environmental issues, save that one map showing blood constraints and such. There is some environmental information that has already been gathered. Rincon Consultants did a sort of a preliminary assessment, which is an appendix to the feasibility study. And five years ago, there was archaeology work, et cetera. There was a draft traffic access study, which of course is way out of date and would have to be updated. So, we fully recognize there are lots and lots of environmental issues. Access is the 800-pound gorilla. I think everybody knows that. So, just want to make sure you realize we're well aware of that. Secondly, just from a process standpoint, some of the council members were in office when the Sheffield Reservoir, the water quality project, went through. And I worked on that on behalf of the city. And we had an ad hoc committee. And we went from, this was going to be lowest common denominator, to really a nice project and sort of a love fest at the end. And we can hope, as you say, an opportunity. But there is some precedent for several agencies and people with different perspectives working together and coming up with a really good product. So, that's our hope here.
Yes. Thank you. I want to echo a lot of what my colleagues have already said. And I think for the council, anyway, and also in our planning commission, they're also going to be looking at the regional area, not just this one parcel, but how it affects its surroundings, especially with the other projects that are being proposed or potentially being proposed. One piece of just language, just to be careful, of one of the options being as-is and/or just selling it as-is does not necessarily mean the open space remains as-is. It depends on who we sell it to. And I think we have to be very careful in how we phrase that as one of the options. Unless we sold it to the land trust or they bought, you know, that, yes, then you have the open space. But just one thing that I heard during the presentation. I'll be honest, I'm not a big fan of big new cul-de-sac type of single-family home residential development on open space. I think that's been clear from my past comments on other things. So, to have various options come to the council when we've talked so much about sustainability, talked so much about mixed use and housing near transit corridors, this is not the location for that kind of development. And I don't think something as very dense development would work for all the reasons that I think was mentioned before in access and traffic and congestion, especially along the 101 Las Pecitas interchange. So, the other layer, of course, then, is the value and the asset of the school district and the needs that the school district has in terms of providing services and educating our children, which is obviously a very important social benefit. I'm intrigued, and I've heard about the idea of a land swap issue, or I think it's something that does need exploring. This council has not had that kind of discussion. I think at some point, we might have to, to see if that works. This property right here, I see surface area parking lots all around it. There's, you know, prime, prime space for reuse somehow. And if it's some way where the Hidden Valley property doesn't have to be fully reached its full development potential, but there's some combination that could happen, that might be a great benefit all around to the neighbors, to if we're trying to find smaller housing or in the downtown core, that kind of development, I'm much more in favor of than developing open space that has never been developed on before, or at least not from, like, from a farm or something like that. So, the subcommittee certainly is intriguing. Certainly, I think Mr. Williams and Board Member Malikoff, if they are interested, should be part of that since they brought it up. And this is not going to be an easy answer, but I agree, I think, the potential for it as a strong example of how different government agencies can work together in solving complex problems, there's huge potential for that on top of the environmental concerns and issues relating to sustainability and building and all of that. So, it's a hard one, but I think one we should look at with our eyes wide open. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Cordero.
Well, this isn't always a difficult conversation to have, I think. I'm always sort of in somewhat of a quandary when we discuss this issue because as a board, we haven't had very much discussion about what we even want to do. The feasibility study was done at the request of the board to see what might be feasible, exactly as it should be. And we've had so much discussion around the feasibility study itself that we've had very little discussion about whether we think, you know, developing the property is what we want to do, whether we think renting, leasing, selling the property is what we want to do. I think we pretty much would be lynched if we thought we wanted to sell the property. But trading it certainly has come up over and over again. And I would just, I almost feel like the council members have had more discussion here about what, you know, about how you, I'm not saying that facetiously, about how you feel about particular possibilities than the board has had. Because we have been always taking in the information of what the feasibility study is telling us. We've asked questions about what it meant, how it was gathered, what the process was, what else we'd like to see, et cetera. But we've had really no chance to discuss which plans or options we think are good ideas, which ones we'd like to move towards, which ones we think we can discard. And so, I would like to see us, whether it's, well, I shouldn't say whether it is. I don't think it's an either-or. I would like to see us have this ad hoc committee, subcommittee, whatever we want to call it, and also find a way to move forward on this so that even if it's just a matter of winnowing down the options, not suggesting that we're ready yet to make a decision, but I do think that we need to move forward a little bit and at least get to the point where we're discussing whether we think building is a good idea, whether we think leasing is a good idea. We have, as a board, have not had a chance to do any of that. And so, I'd like to see us get to that point as well. And the more that we can involve the council as well as the public in having that discussion, the better, I think.
Mr. Williams?
I think I'm very pleased that this is something that people are thinking about. And I do think that there is a way to create a win-win for both the school district and the city and for local residents. And I would just suggest that maybe the way that we could proceed from here is to establish an ad hoc committee, but at the same time, really have some discussion within each body as to what are the primary interests or the primary criteria, not just look at, you know, not do a map-driven approach, but a criteria-driven approach, i.e., you know, is it short-term or long-term revenue that's most important? Is it housing for school district employees that's most important? Is it open space? Is it, you know, good, you know, placement of planning? What are some of the highest interests of each body? And then, the ad hoc committee members could bring that to the discussion with each other. And I think it would be possible. I don't think it's too optimistic to think that we could create something that meets many different interests in one plan or one idea. And I guess the question would be to staff, how could we forward that from here? I mean, what kind of direction or what kind of comments do we need to establish some kind of?
We have two suggestions. One is that I know the school board would still like some study time. And for us to go ahead with public hearings, I'm sorry, public workshops, not hearings, I think is an important one for us to undertake. The other is that perhaps staff could be directed to put a document together so that on our action agendas, we could go through the process of appointing an ad hoc committee. And I'll turn this part over to Jim Armstrong.
I'm sure Mr. Price would tell us that we couldn't appoint members of an ad hoc committee today. And I think it would be helpful probably for your respective staffs to get together and come up with some kind of maybe, you know, old process or chart of work, a draft chart of work that that ad hoc committee could work on and kind of put some bones on it and then come back to your respective bodies. And there may be some opportunities here, just not only on this site and this, but other things where we have, you know, land issues that we could work on. And in some cases, just that dialogue back and forth is helpful on the other things that we work on. But give us a little chance, maybe 30 days, to come up with that with kind of a, sorry, Brian. Brian wants everything next week. In terms of kind of a, maybe a chart of work for that committee, how it would structure. And meanwhile, have some discussion with the school district about, because you have a process you've already established. I think you still want to go forward that and get public input so that this doesn't interfere with that, but can go in parallel and have positive discussions.
Sounds like we've come to a conclusion here. Is that an acceptable, well, we heard from city council members, is that an acceptable? I want to see head nods from my fellow board members, is what it, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Noelle. I assume we can move on to item number 17, additional matters for placement on a future agenda. Any items? It sounds like we still have our plates full with many of the items that would be continuing forward. Mr. Williams?
One thing that we've, that both the city police department and the school district has been involved in together that we do receive a lot of public input about is the truancy program. And it would be, I think, helpful to get an update as to the reasons and results and progress and maybe performance of the truancy program at the next joint meeting.
We have our own board presentation on the truancy program early February. We'll be happy to bring information to the city council in our joint meeting.
I have, I actually have one item related to that. And that is that the city has a youth advisory council. I don't know what you call it. Is that what its official title is? Thank you. And a long time ago, the school board had a student board representative, and that has since fallen away. And we now have a sort of substitute for it. It's very nice to have a young person in the room, but they're not offering opinions on anything substantive. They're delivering information. And I would like to take a look at your youth council to see if we can either piggyback on it or create something like it so that we are getting feedback from a council of students on substantive issues that affect them. Right now, we have absolutely no mechanism for that.
Presentation from our youth council, especially from their staff that does it, you know, and just talk. And the youth council members, right?
Themselves, yeah. There you go. That would be good. Anything else? Any other matters? Mr. House?
Just in the, sort of the same context, we've, I think we've been fortunate as a community not to have had a terrible tragedy like we did several years ago with the deaths of some young people that had us all get together in a church and began to try to strategize. And we came up with a pro-youth coalition, as you recall, way back a long time ago, as sort of a response to those things that were happening. And it's my sense, in terms of having a pulse on what's going on in our community, as much as I might be able to, is that the heat's been turned up. I mean, it's, there's, the gangland kind of thinking is just rising. And it's, and the streets aren't safe for a lot of our young people and let alone the rest. And I'm, I think there, I think we should be as much proactive in this area as we possibly can. And maybe just be glad nothing of the kind I mentioned a minute ago has happened so far. But an awful lot of stuff is going on right now. And it's the police department feels it, the, you know, truancy officers, I'm sure everybody feels it, vice principals are having a lot of folks to deal with. I just feel something going on. And I'd like to have a little, I don't know from whom, you know, from, not just the police either, you know, councillors. I'd like to sort of hear if my sense of it is right or not. My sense is, we got trouble brewing. And we need to be ahead of it as much as we can. So, I just want to raise that as an issue. And maybe there's some things that our, the staffs can help us with piecing that together.
Is that specifically about gang activity, then?
Yeah, but what gives rise to the gang activity? There's conditions out there right now that are resulting in that. We have people coming into our community. We also have situations, economics and other stuff. But some of this stuff is expressing itself that way, Dr. Sarvis. And I guess that's sort of the tip-off for me, that there's rumbling issues going on for our young people that have escalated higher, more seriously than I've seen for a long time. So, I would say it's broader than that. That's one of the key symptoms. And that's another one of those real amorphous things. But I think, you know, it would only take one tragedy for us to all get together on this thing and then create committees and stuff. Let's do it before the tragedy happens.
I see Dr. Sarvis writing. Okay.
I just wrote down Ralph Molina's name.
That's right. Officer Molina. Well, and our campus resource officers, some APs, councillors, that sort of thing. Okay. Anything else? Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for your hospitality.
Thank you for coming.
President Hart?
Yes, ma'am.
May I, real quickly, just a second, back to item number 13, if I could, on the agenda, on bond fund construction projects. I forgot to mention that we recently held a tour of our three high schools for our board members. We would be more than happy to take city council members on a tour of construction activities at Santa Barbara High School. Just let us know your interest and we'll arrange that.
Oh, that would be wonderful. Yeah.
It's pretty incredible. My fellow board members, I believe our board packets are ready. Is that correct, Dr. Sarvis? And they can be picked up in?
Yes, they are.
Okay. So, we will adjourn. Thank you all for coming to our place. Thank you all for coming to our place.
Across the city and not focus it in any one area. I think that's good practice, but it doesn't seem like that's going on with the transit-related spend of Measure D. So is there a policy direction there, or is that just a fact of history?
Well, that's just how it has been in terms of the agreements we have with MTD. Again, the use of Measure D for transit is something that the city did because we wanted to, basically. Sure, we had a mitigation requirement for downtown redevelopment, but that's just a small portion of it. And the whole idea of like the crosstown shuttle, Mason Loop, that we're going to be starting in next year, again, a new service that we're trying to attract, new riders, make, use automobile the choice versus a necessity. We spend money on alternative transportation, not just transit, but sidewalks, buses, et cetera. You know, so the policy in the past has been just primarily with the downtown water shut shut, we expanded the crosstown, we expanded further to the Mason Loop. But again, the amount of money that we have available for additional transit services is drawing up.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Seacor. Dan?
First of all, I'd like to thank staff for a really high-quality presentation. This is very concise and very, very well done, and you've put together information that's taken some of us years to learn into a fairly short presentation. Santa Maria uses some of their TDA money for road maintenance, and as Santa Maria grows, it's going to outpace Santa Barbara in growth. And therefore, the TDA money will be disproportionately shared with Santa Maria, who will most likely continue to use it for the purpose that they've used it before in the past, which is repairing roads and road maintenance. Is that an expectation?
I don't really want to speak for Santa Maria, but it's, I guess, a fair question. I would assume there are, TDA legislation requires them to follow certain rules and go through a process of unmet transit needs, and SBK usually manages that. And if there are unmet needs, they'll have to apply that TDA to it before they're able to really use any of it for roads. And you're right, and you're hitting a very good point, one that we want to stress, that we will see more of those funds shift to the north, and they may put stress not only on our TDA but on other regional sources of funding because they'll probably require those for some of the road needs.
And secondly, the UCSB and the Santa Barbara City College contracts with the MTD on a yearly, annual basis irrespective of ridership, whereas the My Ride program has been specifically on ridership. And so if the UCSB and Santa Barbara City College decide to go to a per-ride program, this will impact MTD.